Thank you. I would like to call the Haymarket Town Council's monthly work session to order for this evening, Monday, October 27th, 2025. Have a roll call, please.
President?
Here.
Gallagher?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Yeah, nice.
Here. Please stand to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item for tonight's meeting is the Town Manager's Report. Who will not be filibustering tonight. Emily.
Okay, first item. I printed out this document for everybody up there, so you should have Excel spreadsheet. This is the strategic plan working document that I sent everyone last week for you to be looking at and reviewing ahead of our session on Saturday morning. A couple items of note. If it's in orange, it's something that Chief and I or one of us has recommended as an addition to our strategic plan. So those are initiatives that we would like to discuss on Saturday with the group and get the approval of council to amend the document for that. Otherwise, you'll just see in the category of working notes, any notes on items regarding status updates, what we've been working on staff-wise, or if there's specific questions that staff may have for council on how to better accomplish or work towards those initiatives. So please take some time, review it. If you have any additions or feedback that you would like to give ahead of Saturday, please let me know as soon as possible. I'll be touching base with Stephanie on probably Wednesday or Thursday in preparation for our Saturday meeting. And just a reminder, it is 8:00 a.m. until noon. We'll have a hard stop at noon for everybody, and we will provide breakfast. We'll have all that. Getting into our tracking log and monthly reports. So a couple updates here. For the RFP for the sidewalk at the town park, we have had the deed and plat recorded, so we're in the final stages there of that project closeout. I will say, though, that the town engineer and I, when walking it, noticed several chips in the sidewalk. The chips are more noticeable when you're walking to the west than if you're walking to the east. I think that's just the way the sun hits it. So if you started the park, started Blight Drive, and walk west towards Walmart, then you should be able to see what we're talking about when it comes to chips. We're going to be reaching out to the contractor to discuss those flaws and any fixes that we can do ahead of time. The stormwater grant assessment program, I'll be hosting another meeting with the contractor this week, so we'll be taking our next steps in preparing for surveying and other information gathering that we need to do to keep moving forward on that. With that, I would like to jump a little and give an update on Robinsons Paradise with the stormwater issues we were having back there in that community. So just last week, on Wednesday, we received the geotechnical report that we've been asking for since the end of summer. D.R. Horton's had significant staff changes, so it's been very difficult to get correspondence with them right now. Katie and I, our town engineer, and I will be reviewing the geotechnical report, and we will be emailing back to those residents who had stormwater concerns and letting them know our next steps and course of action and what we advise them to do in the interim. So that will be going out by end of this week. The park RFP will also be posted end of this week for proposals to be accepted on that. And up at the town park, in case anybody gets any complaints, we've had a couple minor issues with some maintenance. So we have the park company coming out, taking care of looking at the playground. Looks like somebody maybe took a scooter down one of our slides and put some pretty deep gouges in it, so we're worried about children cutting their leg as they slide down. So we'll be closing that slide and taking the appropriate action. Coming up, November 21st, I'll be having my next meeting with the county CXO. So if there's anything that council wishes for me to discuss specifically with them on behalf of the town, please let me know as soon as possible, so I can be gathering information. We're actively in our website redesign phase, working on the background with the company on the initial design of the new website. I'll keep everybody up to date on that. Very important, we go ahead and start working on this website update, as well as the ADA accessibility for the website, as we do have a deadline to meet federal regulations for ADA accessibility on websites. Because of our lower numbers and population, our deadline is not until 2027, but better to be proactive and test it out, make sure it's all functioning the way it needs to be. I have received back the structural evaluation reports on the old post office building, the museum, and the Whole Fish House, also known as Cupcake Heaven. I just got those back this morning, so I'll be looking at those, reviewing everything. If possible, I can come back to council and speak to everybody on Monday night for the old post office building. I don't know that I'll have a document turned around between now and when the agenda goes out, but we will have a discussion at a minimum on the old post office building on the 3rd, so this coming Monday. Other big updates, land use planning, we're moving along with all of the projects. A lot of comments got turned back around this past month for Carter School, as well as the storage lot and the storage lot, Carter School, and some as-built resubmissions. So those are all being actively worked on. Katie is taking a bit more hands-on approach with some of this land use development as we are working through our staff changes. So Katie is coming in weekly and interacting face-to-face with staff, and also available to meet with developers and residents as needed, so that's been a big positive for us. Are there any questions so far on either of those?
I see a lot with the bond reviews and the site plans, and the timeframes are kind of staggering. Are we trying to close up a lot of these? Because, you know, I see a 2017 date in here.
Which one?
I can't remember. It was early this morning, I read it.
Chick-fil-A. So Chick-fil-A is a unique story. So the Chick-fil-A as we know it today was built in 2015 and continued and closed out in 2016. When they closed that out at the time, the developer who built the Chick-fil-A did not come and do as-built or request any bond release. And so fast forward to today, they're trying to wrap up their loosens and do the as-bills and do the bond release for the initial project. At the same time, we're also reviewing the new Chick-fil-A site plan for the expansion of the drive-through, which we approved that special use permit back in the earlier part of the year. So we kind of have two things running in conjunction. So on their end, in 2016, they never fully closed it out, so now we're having to do a lot of cleanup work. I will say, they have a lot of dead landscaping, and I'm not going to release their landscaping bond, but I also told them, there is no sense in pulling all that landscaping out, replacing it, and then turning around and pulling it all back out for the next site plan. So we are trying to work with them because they're in this new site plan phase as well. So this one is a little bit more unique. Otherwise, Crossroads, you'll see they're applying for all of their as-bills and their bond releases as well. They've had partial bond releases over the last year and a half. We should be completing the full bond release here soon. Again, they just submitted the as-bills for that, so that'll still be a couple months out. Band Meter Robinson Village, so right here, Carter Robinson Drive, they still need to close out one of their bonds, that's the landscaping one. They also have to replace a good amount of landscaping material in order to get that bond released. And Taco Bell, some of those that are over there with Crossroads are, they were done separately as individual site plans, so they're in bond release phase also.
Yeah, and I see the self-storage site. I'm assuming that's just another pain from previous administrations, right?
It is. It also switched ownership, so the new ownership is applying for a site plan, and they're trying to take corrective action to implement the site plan and make it so that it is a more usable property. So that's what we're actively working on with them.
Now, are we getting Katie more involved in this? Are we trying to capture a lot of this, or are we trying to refine the processes to understand this stuff? This kind of relates back, at least for me, to your CXO meeting where I kind of said, hey, you know, we know Prince William County has a lot of tools for permits and capital planning and other things. What can we do to utilize those, since they're probably cloud-based? And it's a matter of some type of setup for a seat license for us, as opposed to us having to do all of the primaries. So in your CXO meeting, maybe you can say, hey, what tools do you use for your permitting, your capital planning? And, you know, can we take advantage of these things? So those are some of the topics that I would like to see if the CXO meetings happen. But it all relates to this, right? We're seeing a lot of these come up at once, and we're fully reliant on Katie, I'm assuming, right?
These have been ongoing. This has kind of been, I would say, since I started here in 2017, this has been the standard workload when it comes to land use planning. I think what we're trying to do better is communicate to the council what we're working on and keep a more active log. And so that's why you might see it appear to be more lengthy. This does not encapsulate all of land use planning. You still have your smaller minor zoning permits, everything that goes to the Architectural Review Board. This is just the big-ticket stuff that's been ongoing for since 2016 or earlier, but we're trying to do a better job of tracking it. I would say Katie is a little bit more involved, but not much more than what she's already been doing. She just now has onsite hours as well.
Yep. Well, I'm a good proponent for technology and toolsets, and if we could piggyback on Prince William County and get some of that stuff to help you guys, you might see it releases some of your time as well. So hopefully, we can at least get you a tool that can make your time more efficient and productive.
I will inquire.
Follow up? Can I follow up on that? So it seems to be a lot of catch-up here, right? Some of it's more recent, some of it's a lot older. And I guess for all of our edification, what kind of tools or leverage do you have at your disposal to get these folks to get into compliance relative to site plans and as-built? Okay. So you're not going to release any of those bonds or not recommend releasing those bonds until each individual has their updates done, fully in compliance with all the requirements?
Absolutely, yes. So, yeah, our biggest leverage when it comes to projects not being completed on the construction side is that we hold their bonds. So we hold a performance bond, ENS bond, which is erosion and sediment control, and then a landscape bond as well. Other outside agencies, such as Prince William Water, will also hold the bond if they're hooking up to water. VDOT also has a bond on file when it comes to connecting into the roadways. So all of these will not get bond released until they fully met the requirements and what's been approved of the site plan.
Even with the county and the others?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the outside agencies have their full list of what they have to go through to get those bond releases as well.
Yeah, you know, it's kind of like starting somewhere, right? You got to start somewhere to get this all corrected. So it's going to take a little bit of an effort, it sounds like.
Absolutely, and these individuals ultimately want that, because it's a lot of money on the table if they abandon it.
Okay. I'm sure Roberto's happy about that, though.
No, we have to use it to finish projects, so, yeah. Okay, moving forward, so Kim was at conference last week, so if anybody has questions, you can ask Kim a little further on her conference. And otherwise, a lot of our month with our events and maintenance was Haymarket Day related, so a great turnout for Haymarket Day. We had a wonderful time. I think everybody who came really enjoyed it. We certainly enjoyed that Julia put forth, you know, an even greater effort than we've ever seen before with all of her hand-painted signs and a lot of additions to really make the day special. So a huge thank you to all of staff who participated in that and for Julia heading it up and having a wonderful Haymarket Day for us. So that is all I have, unless you guys have questions.
Certainly do. Do you have a question?
Yes, I do. Just regarding Haymarket Day, is there any data or anything that shows, like, I know you had some things in here for attendance, but just like reviews or any data points that is, like, that we use or that we collect from the vendors or either the people attending the event?
Not right now. We got a lot of positive feedback on social media. We had a lot of vendors, I also know, who email in a thank you or, you know, had a great day. So there's a lot of, I would say, written communication that's just as organic they started off, but also, as we're cleaning up that day, we do get a lot of verbal communication from our vendors. We do try to, you know, check in with them and see how their day's been. I'll say, I think Chief was estimating about 28,000 people for this past Haymarket Day, this year's Haymarket Day. We go off of some estimates based on how the drone footage is and what they're able to see.
Is Prince William County, I know the Prince William County tourism, I believe they, I know the gentleman has come to speak with us before, he had kind of some statistics for us as well, could we?
Yeah, we're going to reach back out to Kevin and see what they were able to do last year is it basically uses your cell phone pings and it sees, you know, what the concentration of pings are in the area, and so they can use that as well to estimate. Yeah, so we'll reach out and get that data.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Do you have anything? You want me to go ahead? Okay. Blight Drive. So I see that their certificate of appropriateness is going to expire the end of this year?
It is. It's going to expire in December.
So what does that mean? Would they have to come back?
So
ARB again?
If they don't go down and pull that building permit for the demolition, so this is in regards to the three single-family homes on the northmost part of Blight Drive back towards 66. They received a COA. It expires in December if they do not go pull that building permit. So if they don't go pull that building permit in the next month and start actively working on the project, then yes, they will have to come back in for a COA to get that updated. Those are now an annual basis, and so they expire within one year if it's not worked on, actively worked on.
Okay. So with respect to Haymarket Day, I just want to follow up on that. Are you going to do a post-event brief or debrief?
So internally with staff, we've already held one debrief, so Chief, Sergeant Bergoon, sorry, I always forget if he's Sergeant Bergoon, Chief, myself, Julia, and other police department officers, we all met and had a debrief last week, so we can certainly meet with council and get additional feedback.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else?
Sure. So Emily, going back to the as-builds and the bonds and so forth, as you indicated, the only enforcement mechanism we have is holding on to their bonds, right, the bonds? But otherwise, is it up to the builder or the developer to decide when to comply with our requirements?
No, no, so we have more teeth than just that. So they certainly can't abandon their project. They have to complete it within a certain amount of time. We would go through notification processes as they're not completing it, and then we would pull on bonds as necessary to complete work.
The reason I say that is, I think you pointed out, the Chick-fil-A, right? It's been going on since 2015.
But they completed everything. So they, the problem with Chick-fil-A was more, they completed everything, they got it up and running, it's fully functioning, they met requirements, they just never came and did the as-built process to show that they did everything and get bond release. There was also significant staffing changes from 2016 to 2017 here in Town Hall, so I'm sure that did not help processes either.
Okay. So if we go and the D.R. Horton, what is it, Robinsons Paradise? What is it?
Back here?
Yeah. If we determined that the stormwater issues as a result of their actions or inactions, what enforcement mechanism do we have?
So we still have all of their bonds there. We already know that there is one issue that they do need to come back out and fix. The grading was not done appropriately per what the site plan required them to do, so we already have that ready to go to send out to the developer. They need to come fix it, and then ideally, they fix it. If not, then we start the conversations, we work with Olan, and we figure out what process we're going to take to enforce them to fix it, or we pull on the bond and do it.
Okay, so there might be some legal avenue recourse that we can?
Okay.
So who require us to file a document in court of pleading for declaratory judgment? Who asked the court to take action and make them comply with the site plan, essentially?
Okay, all right, thanks.
Sure. Okay. There was a mention earlier this year about an intern coming in for the asset list and, you know, discussing or evaluating some software packages and stuff like that. I haven't really seen anybody come in. I saw the two other interns, but I never saw her.
Erica is working with us remotely, so Erica's down currently in Blacksburg, working on her graduate degree. So her and I touch base weekly. What we're currently in the process of doing is procuring the software. We had it lined up to go with one vendor, but unfortunately, our last two phone calls with the vendor were not as successful as we wanted them to be. It was very disorganized, and the vendor should have had a better pitch, you just put it easily, he should have had a better pitch. So we're going to pivot and check out our second vendor. We are hoping to go ahead and procure that next week and start moving forward on it. When it comes time to winter season, when she is home on break, she is local to Haymarket, so she'll be in the office.
And I guess one other thing, I'm sure this is something that will be happening during regular operations and everything, but I guess youth in government, I'm assuming that since we don't have a champion for that, we got to task one, figure out how we want to organize it and determine what we want to keep with it. So are you discussing that with the mayor at this time?
I will discuss it further with the mayor. It initially came up in conversation at our finance liaison meeting regarding funding for the project, should we continue with the spring session as we had originally intended. During that discussion, I had mentioned to our finance liaisons that right now with staff workload, we really need a council champion to really take on this project and be the champion and the leader of it. If that's not currently what is of council's desire, that's not a problem. We do have a alternative. I had pitched to those listening that maybe instead of having a very small select group of students apply and be part of the program, what if we, we being staff or council or, you know, the mayor specifically, go to the school and partner with the history department, social studies department, and instead have a kind of, I don't want to say a lecture, but have more of a interaction with a greater population of the students? So if our goal is to reach out and speak to the students, then let's do it where they're at, and maybe let's have a conversation with a greater mass of them versus 10 of them coming in and applying and it being very limited in what we can offer.
So you hear that, students? You might have some more extra credit coming your way. That's all I have, thanks.
Yeah, just on that note, first of all, I was going to ask the same question, what our next plans are on that, but yeah, as we, let's keep an open mind on that, and maybe that should be part of, even part of our strategic planning session as to what we want to, you know, what our outreach to be, you know, outside of our meetings here, what is, what level of, how strategic and important is it for us to be out in the community for events like that and activities like that?
Okay, I'll look at adding something under number six, which is enhanced community engagement.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Anybody? Last chance? All right, thank you. Next up in the Shark Tank, Chief.
Good evening, everybody. It's good to see you.
Evening.
All right, starting on our report, our monthly report, you can see the calls for service are static at 121. You might see a slight decline in dispatch calls for service and then incline in direct calls for service, but it's very minute and definitely within a position of disparity. It's not concerning one way or another. Combined calls for service are trending very well, as well as our business checks and physical checks, enhanced patrols and foot patrols, which this month was at 2,674, so no real issues there. Offer initiated calls are also static. Our response time is still very good, which is always a positive thing. We don't really see any raises there over the whole year. We're trending very good, and we hope that that remains the same. 133 traffic stops, 62 summonses and 91 warnings for this month. And then you can look at the three-year trend there. We're trending, for this time of the year, we're trending right where we are, a little bit above where we would normally be. And then types of summonses issued are still very static and consistent with what we've been seeing. And you can even look at the year-to-date totals. Right now, we're at 614 for the year. Moving on down to DMV grant, you'll see the fourth quarter's money spent. That number is going to change on the next one. That number is not exactly accurate, the 5903 for the fourth quarter, that's going to go up just a little bit, but I'll have those numbers on the next report for you. You can see the breakdown there on hours, and then also, along with the data summons on the summonses, the split between DMV grant summonses and normal duty summonses written are all complete for the fourth quarter. Arrest, moving on down to hours spent on calls for service, low this month, which was actually good, but you could also see the downturn that we had at 121 for calls for service, so that was going to be down as well, which is a good thing. Backup on outside, for outside agencies, went up pretty drastic. It was a busy month right around our area, fortunately not in our area, which is a good thing, but we were able to assist and benefit Prince William County on their calls for service.
Chief, can I ask a question on that? Can I interrupt you?
No, go ahead.
I was going to ask about that specifically. Is that a product of Prince William not having proper staffage at the county level, I hear, or is that just there's an increase in the surrounding area in need, put it that way?
Without looking at the exact data for each call, I couldn't answer that accurately, but I will say that that's probably a portion of it, as well as the type of calls for service. Obviously, if there's an accident that's near our area that we can get to before they can, and we can render aid to the individuals, we're going to go there relatively quickly. And if it's a call where, you know, that could turn more negative without some sort of police intervention, we make that a priority to go to as well. Whereas usually, if it's something else where they might just need us as a backup unit, we wait for them to actually ask us to come. But I can't, without looking at the data for each call, I can't really answer that accurately, but I would say that that is a portion of it as well. But keep it in mind, we don't take on the call and answer it and report on it the whole way through. We're there just to assist, mitigate any issues until they get there, they arrive, or they handle it, and then we can move on.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
So don't blame me for the question. That was a pretty good increase in one month, for sure. Let's see, hold on, my mouse is bouncing around here. Think, yeah, we are on to the monthly traffic volume. As you can see, as far as what we're tracking for the year, we did a max, this is 189,000 on the eastbound traffic for this month, and then you'll see the weekly breakdown there, and then the speed data, which we've started including. Now, that is speed data for the last month, the September, October eastbound speed data. And then at council's request, I went ahead and started including the graphs on the trending data for 26 to 30, 31 to 35, 36 to 40, and then 41 plus. And you can see those in And you can see those in the next, and I went ahead and went back as long, that sign's been operating since January, so we went back for the 12 months, but keep in mind, it wasn't in full service until March, so that's why you're going to see that slight incline there. We had, once we got it initiated and going, we had a battery issue with it, a solar panel issue, so we weren't getting 100% of the traffic data. That's the only reason for that slight fluctuation that you'll see in January, February on the data. And then if you look at westbound, obviously that traffic sign went into effect in March, so you won't see any data for January or February, but you will start seeing the data in March, you'll see the breakdown. And we're averaging pretty consistent at 120 to 121,000 cars traveling through that sign location into the town. And then going down to the speed data, the same breakdowns that you'll see, and then again, the same breakdowns you'll see for March through the current month of each speeding variable or speed variable. Moving on to current projects, we had our mock accreditation on October 6th. Everything, yes, I'm sorry. My apologies.
Can we just go back for a second?
I did not hear you, my apologies. Go, sure, go ahead.
I wasn't speaking very loudly, I'm sorry.
No worries.
So it seems, maybe it's just me, but eastbound seemed to be pretty consistent over the last nine months.
Very consistent.
And westbound was a little bit of a fluctuation on those speeds. Any ideas where that might be?
Well, I think we did have the park project going on at one portion during there.
So that's slow.
So that could affect it, people wanting to stay away from, I think, I know we had it going into a single lane there, or an offset lane, so the volume would want to decrease there. It could be many different variables for that. I did notice that there was a huge dip in the, hold on, I'm pulling, getting my data back where I can read it. I think it was in the 41-plus mile an hour range.
Eastbound.
On the, yeah, it was on the eastbound side. So my apologies. I went back and looked and tried to figure out why that was, whether we were doing any more traffic details or any more select enforcement, and we weren't. So I don't really know the reason for that anomaly, and I even ran that report twice just to make sure I hadn't improperly data entered my request. But those anomalies I really, really can't speak to. It could be any one of a number of things, but the park project would be one thing or anything like that, that would cause traffic to divert and go to a different route.
Maybe some self-regulating there too, I don't know.
Could be.
But can you indulge me on something?
Sure.
I don't want to be persnickety or nitpicky, but in the first three pages of the graphs, the color coding and versus the other pages?
You want to make it more consistent?
God bless.
Well, what we're doing, what I was doing was adding on graphs.
Right.
Right?
Right.
And then using old data with the new graphic. So I'll get that. That's not persnickety, that's actually, actually should have already been done to keep things consistent and rolling forward.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Once I get into the six or seven years, I'll start doing magenta and chart huge colors for you. No worries.
Super, thank you.
No worries, no worries. So going into the month's activities, like I said, we did do our mock accreditation on October 6th, went really well. We're taking care of some folders right now and some notes that the mock assessors made for our full site assessment on the set, which begins on the 17th of November. Of course, Haymarket Day was held on October the 18th. There was no issues. We had one parking issue that was a little bit more difficult than most that we deal with, and then we had four emergency medical calls for service, two bee stings, one shortness of breath, and then one woman was dehydrated. But all were taken care of, there was no real issues. We had no safety concerns at all, everything ran really well. I will say this, that the one thing I could notice from Haymarket Day was what the town staff did leading up to it and what they did that day. There was a whole lot of unsung heroes there, but the town manager, Julia, Kim, everybody did a great job. And I've never seen two people pivot as much on Haymarket Day as I did Alexandria and Matt Burrows. My gosh, everything from cleaning toilets to fixing the generator within five minutes, they were, they were really on it. So just a great job on town staff's part. I think that they really put a great program together and it showed with the attendance, it showed with the vendors, and it showed with the planning. And they should definitely be applauded for their efforts, all of them did an excellent job. We took part in the Public Safety Expo, as we always do with Prince William County, very well received. NPO Graubeth did reapply for the Firehouse Subs Grant, which we applied for several months back, four or five months back, for new AEDs for our vehicles. That grant did not pass muster, but we're hoping that this one will. We, Mr. Graubeth also has applied for a drone replacement grant, which just came through through DCJS to replace departmental drones. With new drones, that's been applied for. We attended several trunk retreats, but most noticeably the Sweet Julia Grace trunk retreat, and then also we did four hours preschool this month, Sergeant Finley read to the children and talked about law enforcement and listening to mommy and daddy, all those important things, you know? We have started our planning for the 2026 Senior Summit. We'll have our next meeting early next month, next, matter of fact, I think it's next week. And then we have also applied for reimbursement on the BSP heat grant, which we were approved for, to get that money back in the amount of $10,000. And then as far as events coming up, obviously, everybody's going to be focused on the Christmas stuff, but we do have our Halloween candy handout on Friday night. We also have the Prince William County Trunk Retreat at the Manassas Mall this Wednesday. And then we do Operation Santa Claus on December 6th, and then the Towns Event on December the 13th. We got a couple of other things there towards the end of the year as well, but we're rolling right along, so things are going great. Questions?
Trust him. Work him.
Okay. The hours worked for the DMV grants, does that include court time or is that strictly street time?
No, strictly street time, but there is six community collaboration hours in there. We use National Night Out as a community collaboration for two of our officers to hand out DMV traffic material, child seat safety material, anything that is wrong that DMV grant, to educate citizens on that. So we did six of those hours, our community collaboration, the rest of it is all street time.
Okay, so in your opinion, it's insignificant? We don't write enough summonses to really have to track that?
We don't, and not to mention that if an officer will usually show up for court on the summonses he wrote on duty, as well as the ones he wrote on duty for DMV grant, so it would be very miniscule. He'd be in court either way, maybe a few more minutes because of the extra tickets, but other than that, it's a miniscule amount, as you said.
Okay, yeah, just wanted to understand what was built into the graph, so that's good, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Is there any kind of update from your meeting with the Motorola Solutions for all the radios in the car, any updates?
Okay, so what we were looking for for Motorola Solutions is our in-car cameras. We got that approved last year when we were working through the budget and we had problems with the vendor in application and implementation of the program, so we sent the equipment back. We did give them a deadline, a hard deadline to follow, and they didn't follow. Basically, the equipment sat in my office for over six months and was never installed. So we opened it up to other vendors to look at. I can tell you right now, it's a very favorable system that they have. It's very integrated into a lot of different things that we would use, including body worn cameras. Not to mention, the body worn camera also doubles as a radio mic, so instead of wearing two items, the officer would only have to wear one. But now, of course, with that, it has to be a specific portable of our portables to meet that criteria, but we are already started a system refresh with our portals because they are aging out. So it is a very good system. Now, as far as radios, the radios that we currently have in the cars, with the exception of one, are all good. There's nothing, nothing wrong with them, they can still keep moving forward. So I'm not really concerned with those, it's more of the portables that are our issues. We did, as a matter of fact, I was just reading the email a few seconds ago, asked for a total package, body worn camera and Motorola Solutions in-car cam. But we are still in the middle of a contract with our current vendor on body worn cameras. So now, until I seen that quote, I wasn't sure whether I was going to ask to see if we could void that contract. But looking at the quote, I think I am going to call, make that call and see what we can do about that. So that's where we're, what we're looking at right now, is moving forward in a positive way with a stable platform that we can actually get installed. Hope that answered your question. It kind of broad scoped it, but there you go.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chief.
Always wonder why you smile before you ask me a question.
Out of town activity, right? Let's talk about that.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay. I see that we provided about 50. I know there was a significant uptick.
Yes, sir.
You know, that's the highest with that last three years.
That was kind of a one out, but yes.
In comparison to the backup support that we received from Prince William County Police, we're three, right? Three in comparison to 50. And I, even if we go back in time, it's obvious that we're providing more backup support to them in comparison to support they're providing to us, right?
Correct, as far as numbers go.
Numbers go. Okay, and this is, I believe, tied to the mutual aid agreement that we have? Is that mutual aid, MOA?
Yes, it is mutual aid.
Okay. Now, without the mutual aid, do they have an obligation to provide support, backup support to our officers?
They would.
They would?
They would, because our community pays full taxes to that police department, to the county. So yes, but it's always better to have that mutual aid agreement, to know where everybody stands pre-planned before an event happens, whether it be a small event or a large event.
Okay. And again, just looking at it, you know, without putting a whole lot of thought into it, it is to me, based on these reports, it is to the advantage of Prince William County as opposed to the advantage of the town of Haymarket. That's my observation.
It's mutually advantaged, but when you look at numbers, yes, you can say that they're getting more out of us than we do out of them, but there is some context behind, beyond that, that you need to look at as well. It's good that we don't need them as much as they need us. That means that, you know, the police department's doing his job and the council's doing his job and making sure the community's supported with the police department. But second of all, there is cases that we are not going to work that have happened, that happens here. So God forbid, when that day comes, that's when we'll be leaning on them really heavy, because then they'll have to take that case over totally and move forward with it and devote all the resources and assets that that case needs to be resolved with.
If I'm not mistaken, as you indicated earlier, if that does come to fruition, they have no choice but to do that, right?
True, if we requested them, but keep in mind that the chief could always say no, but then it becomes a fact of, of the politicians to get involved. And we don't, we don't want that, because when an issue happens, it needs to be resolved then, not two or three weeks later after discussions and talks. But we have a really good relationship with Prince William County and the Virginia State Police. And Chief Newsom's been very supportive of our department in anything that we needed.
And in terms of number of out-of-town activities, how far out do our officers go out for backup service? Do we have any idea?
It depends on the circumstance, but if it was a serious enough call, I think we have responded to Manassas once or twice for a serious enough call. But usually, no further than Gainesville or Route 29. And then out this way, we've went as far as Antioch for a gentleman that was trying to break into a woman's house while she was there alone. So there's been a couple that went out a couple of miles, but most of it's usually Heathcote and Old Carolina Accident, or Somerset Crossing and Old Carolina Accidents, things like that, that's close, or in this very surrounding areas of these neighborhoods, Piedmont and things like that, Heritage Town.
And do we by any chance track time spent on these backup support? Do we, do we track that? If we do, if we do, then I'll be glad to see that.
We just track the numbers. But there was a, there was a time where we were tracking the amount of time, but I don't recall seeing those numbers lately, because it's usually just, like I said, we just try to mitigate the situation until they get there, and then we move back in. So it's not like we spend a lot of time there. So now, there has been a couple of issues where we got heavily involved with the circumstances, shooting that happened over here a few months ago, where officers, you know, our officers confronted the individual before anybody else did. And fortunately disarmed him, and there was no, there was no officer involved shooting. So now you got to follow up with some reports, some body cams, things like that, that gets a little bit more involved, but never, we're not going out and spending an hour at one of their scenes.
Alright, thank you.
No worries, if you need me to track any specific data, just, just let me know, and that way I can give you a better picture of what we're doing.
Thanks, Chief.
You got to watch the quiet ones, the very incisive questions. So yeah, that's a discussion that we need to continue to have. You know, we've talked, I think all of us have talked about it, and some of our residents and staff as well, about somewhat of a subsidy that we pay to the county, but that's a bigger conversation. Chief, can we talk a little bit about the help eliminate auto theft? And what exactly do you do for that grant?
Okay, we.
What kind of actions and tasks?
Yeah, so basically, the program is to help eliminate auto theft. That is the basis of it, that's why it's monogrammed heat. So one of the things that we did was install the community safety cameras, which we were talking about right before the meeting, which gives us and provides us with those hits. But the good news about that is, is that even though that, that program, that's what those are here for, is they benefit us in other ways, as far as being able to solve crimes or deal with accidents or anything like that, where somebody has went through one of those readers, and then we can backtrack that data, get a tag, and then get a suspect and move forward with the prosecution on that end, whether it be a larceny or an assault or whatever the case may be. So it's beneficial in a multitude of ways, and we didn't pay for it. That's the good news.
I like that.
So we're still helping heat, you know, that's part of it, that's the big part of it, but we're also getting assistance from those cameras as well.
Yeah, that's good, yeah, thank you.
No worries.
One last question for me. I remember earlier in the year, we were talking about, I guess, negotiating firing, or yeah, fire ranger use. With Prince William County.
Prince William County.
Has that been moving forward? Does that look promising?
Actually, Councilman Passanello made some calls and he's got it moving more forward, but the wheels of Prince William County move a little slower than the wheels of the town of Haymarket. But we're good, things are great, our guys are qualified this year, so we do have a little time to not worry about it until spring, so we're hoping to have that new MOU in place well before then. But keep in mind, we still have those outside contacts that we can use most of the time. So, you know, we'll use the resources and try to minimize the impact until that MOU is made right.
I think, and Emily can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's at the CXO level at the county. And the chair issued a directive.
Last month. Yeah, issued a directive last month. So we should be seeing the benefits of that pretty soon.
Cool, cool, thanks.
Chief, I just have one question. I know the October, I guess it was October 25th was the drug takeback day.
Correct.
Could you talk a little bit about that, and specifically just for if residents were not able to make it then, is there anything that they can do, or do they have to wait a year?
No worries. They, we actually, there's a drug takeback day every six months. They do a spring and a fall, we've just done the fall. At any time, a resident that would have drugs, that would like to be, they can turn them over at the department, and we'll house them in our property and evidence room and have them destroyed accordingly. So they don't have to wait, it's always better to get them out of the house when they have a chance, even if it's bringing down here. There's also some boxes out in Prince William County to where they can just drop them in the box and go, the drug box, the drug drop boxes. Now, Saturday, this last Saturday was a partnership between UVA Health, Prince William County Sheriff's Office, the Drug Enforcement Administration, Haymarket Police Department, and Karen Senior Service. We wanted to reach out, and of course Wayne Mitchell does a great job with that, reach out to the elderly community to remind them to get those drugs out of the house that they don't longer need or want, that way they're not just sitting there and being disposed of properly. So the event went well, there was no issues. I don't have a wait yet, I still don't have a wait of what was, what was taken in on Saturday, but we'll get that data by the next meeting, I'm sure, and I'll get that to you. But no, people don't have to wait, they can either wait six months and drop it off at the next drug, next drug takeback day, or they can bring it to the department and we'll be glad to take care of it for them.
Thank you.
No worries. Alright.
Alright, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief, thanks.
All right, moving on to our agenda items. First is our monthly financial report. Roberto.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Trying to think. So in the report you guys have in front of you, I believe captured majority of our meals taxes as they were due on the 20th. We're ahead on that as well. I don't know if there's any specific questions on this current budget. Overall, though, the budget is going as, as planned. On some of the line items, we're, we're hitting the numbers a lot quicker than we should. Coming into December, you know, meals tax will tend to slow down a bit, but not by much. And overall, though, the budget is in the black, which means that we do have surplus funds currently, where, meaning that we're collecting more revenue and not expending as much out. So, so it's a good thing. Obviously, the one thing that is coming down the line that I do need to keep everyone heads up is that we will, I will need to amend the budget for the park sidewalk. There's a few items that have not been completed. Unfortunately, we will be using the same funds we did not use on the last FY 2025 funds, but I will be coming to council to make an amendment as it gets closer to that completion. Some additional work that they needed to do, when it came to the Platts and the Asbots. So that, that will come down the pipeline on that, on that. Yeah, but I don't know if there's any specific questions from you guys.
So if I may, so that's, that's going to be charged to the 25 budget.
No. The work is going to be done in 2026. But we didn't fully use what we had budgeted for 2025, so essentially we're going to be reusing that monies, it's just that right now it got put back into the pot, the reserve pot or the ARPA pot. Obviously now that the work is being done within the next couple of months, we'll just reuse some of those funds that were not used. Hope that makes sense.
Okay.
I had one question and maybe we talked about this and I'm not remembering, but the, under permits and fees, the zoning amendment application, there's a significant increase there. What was that due to? I'm just, I'm not recalling.
That is for the zoning, the rezoning.
Application.
Application that's coming through for the property on 14600.
That got it.
Washington Street.
Just for council's little educational moment, when we have rezoning applications, the first acre, if it conforms, is a set price. And then if it does not conform to the comprehensive plan, it's an increased fee. And then they pay an additional fee for every acre thereafter, the first one. So that fee is a lot higher when it comes to rezoning application, especially when you're looking at the application we have in front of us, which is seven acres, roughly seven acres. And it does not conform with the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. That makes sense.
I'd like to make a comment or two, just to amplify what Roberto reported on. That's okay?
Of course.
So, so we're about, I guess, Monday next week, we'll be at one third of our budget, roughly 30.
Thirty-three percent.
Thirty-three, thirty-four percent. And if you, if you note, on the revenue side, we're running at about 37.8%. So we're above, we're ahead. And on the expense side, we're at about roughly 29, 30%, right? So, so just to amplify what Roberto said about being in the black, we're, we're in pretty good shape. There are areas within the budget that may be a little high, but you know, there's good reason for that. So I just wanted to pass that along. The other thing is relative to the rental use of property, we're tracking the lost revenue for the work that needs to be done at the building here in the front, the old post office, right? And that's running at about 4,600 a month. So it behooves us to move as quickly as possible and get that thing filled. So I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that. And if there's any questions there.
Any other questions? Comments?
I just wanted to give some quick updates. Our audit, FY 2024 audit is currently, currently in quality control. Everything came back positive, no real big changes on it, but we will have a Zoom presentation by the auditor. Once that is completed and finalized to council, I will try to line that up with a work session or a town council meeting. Probably a work session, I hope, just because then you'll be able to talk to them back and forth.
That'll be good.
Yeah, it, it, yeah, it will be good. It's going to be at no cost because we're doing Zoom, so I should make Alexander happy with that. But yeah, no cost. Michael will be available for that. I will get, once we get the finance copies, I will give you guys your paperback version, the binder that, that, you know, you can guys prepare and look at, have any concerns or questions on it with Michael's available.
Roberto, could we, could you just mention what we're going to be doing this Wednesday with Michael?
Yes, I didn't know if you were going to touch base on that. So with getting ready in preparation for our strategic meeting, Emily founded an important topic to be able to kind of start having those financial ideas, scenarios for the town center project. We have engaged, re-engage Steel Millroy, VML, VIP, I'm sorry, to reanalyze. Now that we have a solid number, estimated number of what it would cost to do the project, I've kind of thrown some, a scenario out them, out there to them. They're going to work on it and the hope is they kind of come to a draft version discussion on Wednesday via Zoom with the finance liaisons, the town manager and myself. And then once they have a final idea, or once we give them a kind of a rough idea after hopefully Saturday's meeting, what we kind of want to look at, they would come back and present. This would entail on scenarios how it would be very transparent, very informative to the public, not just council, but to kind of lay the foundation as to how the town council will come to the decision on how we will finance this project, how we plan to pay for it in the future. Just kind of give a better idea and also hopefully a better understanding how it will work. It also will reanalyze the five-year estimated, you know, forecasting. So I think it's, it'll be a great tool for council when it comes to that time for, for them to decide going forward and also a great educational presentation to the public. So we will be working on that and council will be made aware of it pretty soon.
This is a good time to talk about the disposition of the vehicle, right? The income from the vehicle?
I don't, to be honest with you, I really haven't talked to Chief or the town manager on it, so I'm not aware if there are any potential plans. I've heard about it, but I don't even think there are concrete plans with amongst them to bring up.
I don't know if they are aware of the.
So, I mean, I could talk about it. So the thought was, obviously we all know that the chief was able to surplus the vehicles, the old vehicles that we, the town had. In practice in the past, we've usually just put it right back into the general funds, which combined at the end of the year goes into the reserves. There are times though where not this police chief, but in other jurisdictions and prior chiefs, they tend to kind of use those funds if there's a opportunity to use them for new equipment or any items that they, they may need or find a need for. The discussion, again, I was not part of that discussion just yet. We haven't really concrete talked about, there's a discussion of some ideas that I believe the town manager and chief would want to bring to the table to council as a whole. Obviously, these discussions are, are had at finance before, were brought to the final decision or discussion to, to make a decision on. I mean, in practice, you know, these are the type of things where other jurisdictions would use because it is kind of like free money in the sense of that's not hurting the budget, it's not really affecting the budget. You could use, essentially you'd want to use it for a one-time expense, not something that's operational and every year we have to budget for. That's pretty much what we, our budget is for. Again, finance liaisons, I know they have their thoughts on it, but we haven't brought it up to the table here because I don't feel that we are prepared or ready for any discussion really on it. But some ideas were turned out there about maybe using it, considering how it could be used, but nothing concrete.
Well, I guess we would envision, you know, coming up with a couple of alternatives and then presenting it and having that discussion here.
Could we talk about Saturday?
Oh, no, no.
No, too quick.
Yeah, that's kind of like.
Saturday is the June 20th.
Yeah.
We have four hours.
Yeah, that's a good question though.
I didn't know, the amount.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The amount, the amount is 16,900, what we're talking about.
It's going to be one big purchase or something.
Should. We'll have a. Different opinions, but anyways, looking forward to that discussion.
Yeah, of course. As always, just so everyone knows, you know, Councilman Baker, you can always stop by the finance liaison meeting, so if you want to be part of those discussions as well.
There you go.
Get your hand ready.
You're on, Keith. You're on.
Thank you, Roberto.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right, let's move on to our ARB vacancy. Kim.
Good evening. Back in, I believe, August or September, you had a resignation on the ARB, Joanna Mason. Her term expires June 30th of 2027. I reached out to several people and you have before you on page 26, an application from Seija Nair. You may recognize that name. She was the applicant who was also interested in the planning commission vacancy that we recently filled in July. So she is interested in the ARB vacancy. That so far is your only application. If you would like to re-interview her, I can set up for her to come to the meeting on Monday night for an interview. Otherwise, you would make an appointment if you're satisfied with her application next Monday.
Input, input from staff? Any input?
She seems interested. I mean, if you remember her from the interview in planning commission, she does have some banking, I believe, background.
Didn't she want to be on the ARB?
No, PCC.
Oh, she wanted PC.
Yeah.
So she'll be happy with the ARB?
Yes, sir.
My personal opinion is that I think we, I, I like it when they come in for, for the particular role that they're interested in and they speak to us about that particular role. I do remember her, her planning commission, I have zero, you know, issues at all, but I think it's nice when any of the candidates do come in and speak to us and give us the opportunity to ask a couple of questions. So I, I would be personally be in favor of having them, having her come next week.
Just to give you a little insight, we do also have a BZA vacancy and I threw the BZA vacancy at her first and she was not interested in it because it's not as active as the ARB.
That's right. Can I ask, just for clarification, who on the PC is also the representative on the BZA?
Right now?
Yeah.
Jerome Gonzalez.
Oh, so Jerome is doing, okay, fine. All right.
And right now, planning commission, your ARB liaison to plant from the planning commission is Dave Cappicello.
Right. Okay. I'm agnostic, but you know, if you want to bring her in, that's great.
Yes. Have we been transparent to her? Because of our situation, things can change between both boards and, you know, openings could just start popping up. So she's aware of that and she's happy securing ARB at this point?
Sounds like a person who wants to give back to the town, so.
Think this is a good stepping stone for her.
Yes.
I, I have no objection to it. If, if she is able to be here for two minutes, great. If not, I don't have any objection.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody else? Comments, questions, thoughts?
All right, let's move on to our last agenda item, the town council vacancy.
All right, so Councilmember Ramirez resigned at last at the meeting on October the 6th. We put out the application or the opening, got several interest in the town council vacancy, however, a good majority of those interests were outside of the town limits. But you do have two in your packet, Dave Cappicello and Jeff Cress. Both are planning commissioners. So they are, I feel you need to interview both of them to make a decision. So I can get all three, like we can get Seija in here quickly and then followed by the two council. I just need to know when you would like to do the interviews, if you want to come, have them come in at six and do 15-minute interviews? How long do you think you want to take in interviewing these applicants before I set the, set the interview times up?
And that would be in closed session, correct?
It would be.
Six o'clock, 15 minutes, 45 minutes total.
I agree.
Yep. 15 each.
What's up, Joe? So the last time when we did this, we had a set of questions for both. So we'll do the same thing. We'll have a list of questions that will, consistent across the board.
No, just a little update or just a little precursor here is you have 45 days from the time of the resignation to appoint. If you don't appoint within that 45 days, then the judge, then the circuit judge will appoint. So I don't think you'll have a problem with appointing, but you can appoint after your interviews next Monday, or we'll have to hold a special meeting before November 20th to appoint.
So, if I may, so we're going to have a discussion in closed session, do the interviews, and then we'll have an item on the agenda.
Correct.
For discussion. Okay.
Yes, that works. I mean, I'm good with that.
We just, we just do it all next week.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. First of all, before we go any further, I just wanted to thank everybody, all the students for coming out tonight. Love having you here. We're, we wish we could speak, make you all get up, but there's no citizen time tonight. But thank you very much for, for joining us. If there's no other business before the town, do I have a motion?
Vice Mayor? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.